Great. All right.
Well, I like this. I want to go close.
I brought them closer. All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the town council work session on Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is ten oh one A.M. And we do have a quorum of council members in attendance. And let the record also show, we have Town Clerk Heard and Town Administrator Aiken as well. So if I could get, starting out, a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as written.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Ellis. Could I get a second?
I second.
And seconded by Councilman Bitter. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Our agenda is approved. One second. All righty. First discussion item on the agenda is the administrator's update. So, Mr. Aiken.
So I wanted to start out by telling you, I'm here to tell you thank you. I know you don't hear that much when you're elected and in your public service. But the easiest thing to do, if you're wanting to fill these positions, is just put things out for bid and then tell the public, like, hey, this cost a million bucks, sorry we couldn't do it. Because people can't argue with that very well. But it takes guts to take a step forward and say we can. You hear a plan to do something differently than the shop. It's going to fail big time. And I know that our chip seal project got off to a real rocky start. But we're definitely in the game here now with, with the chips spreader that we bought is an awesome piece of equipment. And it did, I won't say perfect, but it did an excellent job in having used it. So, just want to talk, we were able to get a really good base layer on Vista last week. And we're pretty much done for the year with what's going on weather-wise. But in the spring, we'll be able to add, you know, another layer and then finish later on Vista. The base layer is great. And the guy's named it Tiny Toby Giant Machine, but the spreader machine is really effective for what we're going to do.
Did you say they named it?
Tiny Toby, yeah.
Tiny Toby.
Why not?
All right, I like it.
So first layer's done, and you can definitely see that upper part we did with that was really good. So we also did some maintenance pieces where there were places where people, you know, tining the water line, cut across the road, will be able to use. We went and finished some of those maintenance areas last week as well, ten and plat twenty-one and so on and places. And they did some maintenance in twenty-one. But we had about five hundred gallons of tar left over at the end of the day on Thursday. And instead of trying to keep that, keep circulating in, it's going to be cold weather, we just went straight out from the shop on Middle Ranch and did, I don't know, maybe a couple hundred feet there. Didn't do any road prep or anything, but it was either use that stuff or something, so. And I'll put something out that was not planned, but I didn't want to just waste that material. You always overbid a project for your materials because it's terrible to get done at the end and say, man, we're six yards short of concrete or whatever, that's a bad day.
So what percentage of the, of that excess was of the total?
What percentage?
Yeah, like five hundred gallons is equal to five percent, less than five percent?
I don't know, we did, we did, we had two thousand gallons last week.
Okay, two thousand, okay.
Yeah, that was just the one day, but.
All right. So it just gives you, yeah, okay.
So we'll see how that holds up with normal road prep. But, and then in the spring, we'll be able to get plat five done and the extra layers on Vista. And then we'll go on plat five.
Can you talk just a little bit about the washboarding on Vista and what the cause of that is, just in case anyone hears about it?
So Vista and plat twenty-one, when we use the spreader boxes, just to make sure we had enough rock down, we overspread, and that's pretty typical. And we haven't had the time with everything going on and equipment failures and accidents to go back and brush that off. But when you do chip seal, you put the tar down after the road prep and you do a little bit extra to make sure you get enough. The roller comes in and packs that down, and then you brush it off. So we did quite a bit extra with the spreader boxes. A little harder to control, but that's why it looks washboardy is because there's an extra rock just floating around. So it kind of piles in the spots, but we'll get that brushed up and cleaned up as well with the plat.
That's awesome.
And you'll do that here now, I mean, yeah, okay.
So the spreader machine actually does a much more efficient job. Instead of having a ten percent overage, you're like two percent overage. Any more questions about paving?
Yeah, one quickly. We got the tank truck completely cleaned out?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So we'll just kind of winterize that, park it for winter. But, and plan is for the spring, what it looks like will be most efficient for us, we can rent a large tanker just to have it at public works during the summer months. And then, instead of having, because what we had to do right now is when we bring the tar up, it's a truck, transfer it from that truck to our truck, we just get a bigger tanker and have as much tar as we need there.
Yeah.
And then we have a good three days, we can.
Do a lot.
Yeah. So.
Is there a priority list of roads? Are you guys going to draft that with like the town master plan?
Great question. There, yeah, there's an older priority list. And we are going to, we kind of put this up in a roads board, which is, you know, have a quorum right now. But we're going to look at that list and see if there needs to be some slight updates. And just an example, there's a couple, like Prater Canyon. A bill took that later off and it wasn't the contractor to place. But that's probably one that we should move up to list. It's not, wasn't on before. So we're going to take a look at a few things like that and see if we need to alter some things and come up with a matrix to show why we think that haven't put that to work.
Mayor, isn't that an agenda on the, I mean, an item on the agenda for Thursday?
It's more of a general, like, road improvement and chip seal, not really going through and doing specific road prioritization, so, but just, yeah.
Because the goal will be to come up with a list that says, hey, twenty twenty, summer of twenty twenty-six, how many do we think we can do?
Right.
And what's that number look like cost-wise, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, and here's, here's the specific, and we can change it, we can be flexible potentially.
Yeah.
Right, but, but, yeah, okay.
I think the nice thing is going to be that, you know, when we do the next year's budget, you know, on July first, the, you know, weather permitting, we'll be ready to hit the ground running with the road projects instead of building up to it over a few months, so.
Yeah, we should have some leftover money to do some starting in June.
Possibly, yeah.
I would assume.
Yeah.
So talking about roads, we also have a lot of road base issues with the amount of construction with a veil, Silver Star and Crown, digging across the roads, that sort of roads. There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. So our plan for the spring is to have a company come in with a raider, a raider and a dump truck. And then we'll use our raider and a dump truck and we'll bifurcate our efforts there and try to get it knocked down in half the time. So it breathes well in my mind, Zach's mind, but that's the plan. Yeah, that's pretty. I have talked to Silver Star about some concerns we have when they dig across the road, the trench. And when that gets put back and disheveled the road base, and we're lacking road base in a lot of areas.
There's also, I mean, I don't know if the rest of the council has noticed this, but in a couple of places I've seen where they've done the trenching, like along the side of the road, in the, not in the road, but in the easement, but those trenches are very shoddily filled in, so, and.
Yeah, I had the advantage of watching them one time with the trench. And the way they filled it in was the backhoe drove up alongside of the mound to push it over a couple of times and then ran the backhoe up and down to pack it down. And in the rain, when you're walking up the road, you get into mud.
Yeah. It's kind of a mess.
So we will have some road rehavin' spring for sure.
Well, you got the swimming pool hole filled in on Snow Forest, that was.
Oh, my gosh.
It's got ruts now, but it's subsiding.
Yeah, it's still soft.
Still soft.
Talking about water, our Prater tank, and I brought this up two weeks ago in an update email, but the lid there does have a leak. And I don't know when it was repaired, but some time ago, there was some kind of epoxy put on the top of the lid there to prevent the leak. So it's been known for a while, prior to me being here. But that tank does have a little bit of a leak. And Ryan's looking at the EPA NSF sixty-one or whatever the designation is material to see if we can put another patch on it, but that tank is aging. And we do need to start a plan at least to have a replacement there. We also are looking ahead to the Prater delivery line. And just kind of discussing that, I know that probably what that'll come down to is if we somehow got fast-tracked on Forest Service approval, I think we should go with the delivery line first. Ryan's not born unconcerned about the tank lid there, especially before that year. We shouldn't have any problems with it, but it is starting to age. He thinks that when you put a one million gallon tank there, it roughly costs three million dollars. So that's a lot of conversations to come, but just an idea of what is on the horizon.
Will we get into that on Thursday at all?
Maybe a little bit, because we've got some proposed objectives. One is replacement of tanks and the transmission line, and those things are on there, yes.
Because we need to start looking for grants now if we're going to do it.
Yeah.
Get those set up.
Yeah, we're also going to have to get started on the engineering on that, on the tank.
I was thinking about that, too.
Because the delivery line, the engineering should be in process, right?
Should be, I don't, I don't know, you have to think that the survey, the surveying, then Ryan's going to design it. You need, to be able to apply for grants, you've got to have an engineer in first, so.
So that could be something for us to consider for the budget for next year to get the engineering started on the tank replacement.
Yes, yeah.
Our Green Canyon tank, the interior, interior lining will begin on Monday. And I don't know if that's a setup day or what, but that's. So we're going to start draining that tank Sunday, Monday. And we're going to send an email out about asking residents to conserve water, meaning please don't water your, you know, lawn four hours a day, it's end of the year. And that's why we chose this time of year to do it. But Ryan's pretty confident we're not going to have a problem. Quentin and Zach and I are, you know, biting our fingernails every day, worried about it. But basically, we're going to reverse a pressure relief valve off of Green Canyon that will allow us to pump all three pumps directly up to the Prater tanks instead of to Green and then from Green to Prater. So overall, we're hoping it takes three weeks or less. But that's, that's where we're at on that project right now. And then, of course, they'll come back and do the outside lining in spring now because they felt it was too wet to do when they were here.
The material we're sealing inside the tank with, does it cure in time? Is it affected by the outside temperatures?
It would be affected, but they're bringing in, I understand, some kind of heat pump
Okay.
to make sure it stays at the right temperature, so.
You said three weeks, so people have to conserve water for three weeks? Or is that just?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be without the Green Canyon tank for a while, so. So we had, the first Monday of the month is when we do our water samples. And we've gone, went back to using the Afton Lab because it's closer. It's not driving Idaho Falls all the time. But there's kind of an issue that came up, and I don't have an answer for it yet. So we received notice from the EPA that we had a caliform positive sample. And so we retested all the wells in spring, the source, two up and two down. So that cost a bit of money to do that. They all came, came back clear, so there's no additional assessment or anything like that. But I'm glad the mayor checks up on my work because I totally missed this. I read the email three times, but the address was not in the town. It was, it was just outside of town, so.
On the original positive, yeah.
No, information's a little bit slow, but I don't have a government shutdown effect to EPA. They still have essential people. But when we asked, hey, this isn't an address in the town, they originally posted our, our water test as being absent of anything on the website.
Yeah.
After I sent the email saying, hey, what's going on here, this is in the town, they changed it to being.
Positive, yeah.
Positive sample.
Yeah. I wish I had taken a screenshot that first time we looked at it, so.
And I called the other location that had the address with a positive sample. We said, yeah, we had a positive.
Yeah.
We've called the Afton Lab, and Quint was, was there this weekend, but he got a call. I don't know if it was Friday or Saturday, but he said, hey, the lab called our sample was cleared. The EPA responded with, I got the wrong address, but you had a bad sample. And they changed their website.
Yeah.
Really?
It was a positive sample.
Yeah.
The problem is, the Afton Labs nail mills the results. So we don't have them yet, but we should get them hopefully by today or tomorrow. So I can't answer if we actually had a bad sample or not. But I'll let you know.
But all our retests were good.
Yes, they were. The confusing thing, though, too, is there was point eight chlorine in the positive sample.
Yeah, the residual, which.
We asked our water expert who was here last week, we thought, how is that possible? And he said, I've never seen that, I don't even know, I'm going to have to do some research to how you can have a positive sample with that much chlorine in it. A lot of, a lot of questions here.
Yes.
Is this a, what do I want to call it, a record-keeping issue with Afton?
I don't know.
Yeah, so we're not sure if, well, like Trevor said, we don't know if we had a positive on that original one or not, because we haven't gotten the test report, which in itself, to me, is a bit of an issue, the fact that the Afton Lab only will mail a hard copy to us and not give us electronic results. But we'll, we'll see what we can do about that, probably, maybe nothing, but.
We'll try to get the more timely results if we can. So should have the answer in a couple of weeks, but I really don't know what happened.
Sounds like a record-keeping issue.
Hopefully.
Hope that's it.
Yeah.
So we are, as part of the budget and everything, we purchased and upgraded our iWorks program. And Jamie and I have been going through the trainings, trying to figure it out, trying to decide how we're going to do this and that and how the workflow is going to go. But we're going to use that a lot more internally to track everything, you know, complaints from what our SMO does, all the way through our public works inventory. So it has a really good payment management thing, giving them information that they put in there. And it has a record of, you just chip sealed this, you need to reassess it in X amount of years. Here's one we recommend with maintenance layers. We can add and do inventory and everything in there. It also has a water management program. And it will work for our water infrastructure. It's a little, it's a little clunky entering information. But basically, if we maintain it well, it should, it should take our abilities up.
We shouldn't have to enter anything, we should be able to transfer from one to the other.
Yeah, we're, we're providing them a list of, here's our stuff, they're putting it in as part of the build. But from there on, we'll have to enter.
All new, all new stuff.
Yes. So if we replace a fire, if we put a new fire.
Oh, okay, that part, yeah, all right.
Replacement.
Sorry if I didn't explain that.
No, that's, I was thinking something completely different.
But it should, we should be able to put in for water, the section of pipe is fifteen years old, here's the life expectancy, and here's what it costs today.
But moving from one database to the other should be one key.
Yeah. We don't really have a database right now, we just kind of have spreadsheets and Word documents.
From spreadsheets to databases is one key, too.
Yes. But it's taken up a lot of time, we're working on that. So we'll probably, in two weeks, we'll probably be implementing how we're going to do that internally. We'll be done with the training and using that. The last thing I have on the list is we, we are ready to take over septic inspections. Probably start that in the first couple issues. The biggest thing there is we don't have a, we haven't put in a charge, a cost of what we're going to charge people. So when talking to Scott, it requires three inspections. You're going to do a soil inspection, and then you look at the placement, and then get a look at the next inspection on how they do the compaction and actually put it in. And then a weight check inspection as well. Scott's here if you have any questions on that, but his recommendation was seven hundred fifty dollars. I think, I think Jamie reached out to other towns to look at what they charge. And the county currently was charging three hundred. They told me they were going to raise that soon by spring. And I think App House was fifteen hundred dollars, Jackson was somewhere around a thousand-ish, or so.
Now, this is on the enhanced septic systems, right?
That's a Presby, is what we're, the state's pushing.
Yeah.
That, that's, Presby's an enhanced one, right?
Correct.
The enhanced is actually above the Presby.
Okay.
There's a standard, there was the Presby, and then there was an enhanced, which requires a molder.
Okay. So what would our cost be? I mean, I, I get everybody has a different price, don't compare us to Jackson. It's just not fair, okay? Because you're building, you know, ten million dollar homes there. So what, what is, what is our cost? Just, I mean, it doesn't even have, it can be a range, too.
Time is, Scott, what's the time?
Three, three inspections, Scott, would, each inspection would take how, how many hours?
Well, I mean, basically, I think you can do an inspection with less than an hour. You know, more from thirty to forty minutes, you play.
So if we just figure three hours of Scott's time, would be the cost, right?
You do have entering the data and.
Okay, but, again, you can have a little overhead effect. I'm just curious. Is it four hundred and fifty, is it, is it four hundred, is it three hundred cost?
It's called activity-based costing. I figured three hundred would be accurate. I mean, depending on if we have to do a reinspection, you know.
And the county currently charges three hundred?
Three fifty, or three hundred, yeah.
But you said they, they're going to raise it potentially.
That's what they're telling me.
Does the council have any feelings one way or another about?
One time.
I don't really want to overcharge.
Right.
At rest, it's, you know, I mean.
Does the county still have to come?
No.
No, they'll be taking over.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And then, like Scott said, they did one inspection, they just looked at placement, like, yeah. So they weren't really inspecting the compaction or other things, but.
Do we want to?
And a resident can't say, I'm going with the county's inspection, not ours.
Yeah, because.
Well, that's, yeah. I wouldn't go too high, I guess, is what, I mean, let's.
We all have significant building permit costs based on footprint, which is higher than most places.
Do we need a permit for this?
We do.
Okay.
We'd have to come up.
With a, like a form, yeah, okay. So, and I don't think we have one drafted yet, do we? A septic application or inspection form, okay.
Some other ones we can go off of for difference.
All right, so we can, I think we should get one of those kind of put together. And the council, somewhere between three hundred and seven hundred and fifty. I've heard a lot of different numbers. I mean, again, I kind of would echo Councilman Bitter. I don't want to, I see us overcharging, but we should be charging what it's going to cost us to do it now, since we're taking on that responsibility, so.
Just especially with the county charging only three hundred, let's not.
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to seven hundred, right? I mean, county never did anything anyway.
So maybe we should have the, get the draft form permit application or whatever we're going to call it, and then the recommendation from the staff on what the fee should be. Okay, all right.
Then we can do that by resolution in November.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Unless you have any questions, that's all you have to do.
So meters, on the residential meter side, you just sent that out to, or it was publicly sent, when does that close?
Um, I didn't look at the actual date, I think it's November the third. That's probably, it was three weeks.
So, okay, first part of November, then? And then we can, we can make a decision and get that on the calendar?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And this is on the new systems that will come into effect in January?
The residential meters, yeah. We will, we will be installing them in the winter.
Right, but. The bids are on the new, new technologies.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the town administrator?
Yep, one more. When do we get simply skated?
Uh, they're in the process of building it. We, we got them all of our tags, yeah, so they can start, they're building the boxes now. So they said six weeks, we're probably, we're going to have two weeks into it, so probably a month.
Middle of November?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay, anything else? All right, all right, moving on. Next item on the agenda are the financials. We had a little bit of a staffing shortage first thing this morning, so Loretta is covering some stuff downstairs. So Councilman Bitter has graciously agreed to cover the financials for us.
And I'll just kind of give a overview, I'm going to do the detail that Loretta does because she does it so much better. But just a quick summary, on the general funds side for the month, revenue was down thirty-four, it's down thirty-four K year-to-date. Fifth penny has been down four percent, and the sales and use tax was down eight percent. The county, if you guys all recall, said that everything was going to be down eight percent. We didn't quite believe it, but right now, the sales and use appears to be eight percent and the fifth penny four percent over the last three months. Expenses, so revenue's down thirty-four K year-to-date. Expenses on the general fund side are lower by sixty-two K. So we're actually favorable, you know, on the, on a net income basis before capex. Capex is always due to timing, and capex on the general fund side is lower spending than, than planned by fifty-four K. So again, we're saving about a hundred and, what is it, sixteen K on lower expenses offset by the lower revenue of thirty-four K. Cash balance sits at about one point six million or one, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than what we had forecast in the budget. On the water fund side, revenue is up two hundred and twenty-two K. That is due to grants that we did not budget for. And, you know, first time through, we thought we had everything, but apparently there were things in the, in the works. So we're up two hundred and twenty-two K. Grants make up one hundred and seventy-five K of that, and the higher tap-ons is basically the residual. Expenses are higher on the water fund side by ninety-three K. That is the timing of loan payments. It doesn't mean we're going to be over, it's just when the payments are made versus when the budget was. They, they made the payments at the end of the month, and so in the system it shows going out at the end of last month when they're for this month. Capex is lowered by one point one million dollars, and that's just based on the timing of our projects. So again, we, that'll catch up next, next year. And the cash balance right now is three point five million dollars higher, or three point five million, which is a million dollars higher than what we had forecast through the first three months. Total cash sits at five point one million versus a budget of three point nine. So, and most of that is due to the, to the capex and, and a little bit of savings on lower, lower expense. And the, and the grant money that we received. So that's kind of the summary of where we are. Things are, things are rolling. It's kind of fun to be able to compare it each month, is, how did we, how bad did we screw it up? Or how, how well did we do?
There we go, how well did we do?
Yeah, we always identify the variance as though negative first, see if there's. Anyway, any, any questions on that?
Okay, thank you for covering that. Also, under the financials, council may remember that at our last work session, we did vote and agree on purchasing the snow gates, which, if I remember, it's like eighty-eight thousand dollars. So subsequent to that meeting, we also talked about in our last work session doing a budget amendment to show that, given that it was a completely separate item that we hadn't budgeted for and didn't really want to just say we were going to take it out of money not spent on the Vista project. So Councilman Bitter worked with Loretta, and they did draft up what is now, we're going to call it, well, it's a budget amendment. At first, we thought we could do it as a resolution in one fell swoop. However, after looking at it further. looking at it further, we really need to do the budget amendment as an ordinance, so it'll be a brand-new ordinance, which means we're gonna have to read it three times, just like we did for the original budget. By the time we actually kinda researched it and realized we should be doing this as an ordinance, we were nine days out from this meeting tonight, which is, by statute, we're supposed to post any ordinances 10 days out. So that's why the budget amendment is not in tonight's package and it'll be read for the first time next month, but just so the council's aware, that's what's going on with that and I'll apologize for us not getting it in this month. It was just, wanted to make sure we were gonna do it right and, as it turns out, ordinance is the way to go, so just didn't have enough time to get it done.
And we didn't change anything else.
No.
I mean, we really believe that we're gonna understand in capital on multiple projects, so at the end of the day, we, we could've taken and removed some to offset it, to keep it zero, but right now, we just threw it in there.
And the council received as part of just the additional documents for this meeting, what that first reading version of the ordinance will look like and it will have a new number, it'll be 202508 unless, like, okay.
So, why doesn't it say amendment number one? Are we gonna, like, just number them every time we amend?
Yes, yes. So then, you know, the official budget will be this ordinance number, which is amendment one, yeah.
And hopefully, we don't have any number two, number three, number four, but.
And we did go back, actually Jamie went back and looked, like, the last time there was a budget amendment was.
2017, 2018.
2018, yeah, it was a while ago and so she went back to look how it was done then and it was done this way with a new number and as identified as amendment one, so, but yeah, as Councilman Bitter said, the only change is the addition of the cost or the expense for the new snow gates, so.
Timing issue. The new snow gates have been ordered and are being installed?
I don't think they've arrived yet, but they will be installed whenever they arrive and from a timing standpoint, I mean, typically, we could wait and do this amendment at the, in the spring, right, in case there's something else we need to amend, but just in the interest of letting folks know what we're doing, we're doing it now, so I, I think we're fine to be moving forward with the expenditure of the funds. We may have another amendment if other things come up, but that's my thoughts on it. All right, any other questions about the budget amendment? Okay? All right. Mr. Kazir, building official report, please.
Uh, well, we got a lot of things going on here. We got some controls going in for the chlorination, new coordinators, we got some new flow valves coming, that's, should be here by any time, which we're gonna be, for the first time, hopefully have an accurate indication of how much water we're actually, is flowing through each pump house, so. I don't think we've actually had that, that measurement, it's been accurate, I don't know what we've had, it's what we build out, so hopefully.
Can I?
Know exactly where we're at on our flow on each pump house compared to what we're built out on a new structure.
Can I, do you think folks can hear Scott back there? Can you drag a chair up to sit next to Trevor, sorry? Just 'cause I wanna make sure we, folks that might watch this later can hear what you're saying, thank you.
Also, we got some electric going into the water bay next week, we're putting new heaters throughout the water bay, so we can keep the apartment warm through the wintertime. We're still getting permits, I mean, plans for new house homes, we got four more in this week, so.
Do you know what we're up to now?
Yeah.
Single-family homes?
I got one gentleman sending me the plans this morning, I probably already got them on my email, but he's doing two homes. So, yeah, there's no slowdown with the permitting.
We're about 40 new homes this year.
Really?
Okay, well, I'd say just maybe around 38.
Well, it depends on, some of those are decks, we have, we've, I've made 40 files to date unless he's got a couple more, but.
So they're not all single-family homes?
But some are decks and are structural modifications.
Okay.
So I would say a little, yeah, less than 40 as far as we have.
Are we talking about, what, is it the fiscal year, calendar, what do we, what period?
No, it's January.
January of 2025?
Calendar, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And of course, you know, we're upgrading the SC system, so I've been working with those guys on getting them all the tags, getting everything prepped so we can have everything programmed. So, hopefully by the first of the year, we have all of the, you know, some accurate controls with what, you know, the flow valves and the chlorination, everything should be updated, hopefully by first of the year is what I'm thinking. But, yeah, it's been busy. Sure, it's been a busy year.
Who's gonna be doing the installation of the meters, the new meters?
Well, I think.
Are we gonna do that in-house or are we gonna bring somebody in to install?
I was gonna do the watch call. Yeah, ready that we're planning on doing the installation of the meters, if we run into something that looks like a problem, we'll look at it then, but so far, we're hoping on it.
Do we have sufficient staff and time?
Yeah.
Okay. Come on, man.
That's the top of it, so we can bump something else if needed. Now that we got the roads, far as we.
Get them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
That's about it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Kazir? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the America 250 grant and town common status. I'm not sure there's much of an update on this, but we put it on here in case there was.
Yeah, we, we weren't able to meet with Tom on the grants, we just, we put it out and they both had too much going on, so we're planning to meet this Thursday.
Okay.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
So we do, we have talked to local artists, we've got a little more from numbers on it, we're planning, there's nothing real.
Okay, we'll just carry it over for the next meeting then. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council on that? I know we don't have much right now, but it's, it's still being worked and the town treasurer, Loretta, has jumped into the fray as well to help on that one. All right, the next item on the agenda, tonight during our town council meeting, and we'll go over regular agenda items here at the end of this meeting, but I just wanted to make the council aware, we will be having the final decision on the plat amendment that was filed by the Star Valley Ranch Association. There is a recommendation from the planning commission that you all should've received a while ago. Does anyone have any questions about this? This is essentially their request to combine lots 11, 12, 13, and 14 and plat 17, which is the area right there where the pool and the pizza shack, so this is something that's been going on for a while.
Parking lot.
Yeah, and the parking lot area, so. And if you go back and read the memo from the planning commission, while originally there was one comment that objected to that lot combination, it was withdrawn and so, and the town attorneys looked at everything and feels like we're in a good place to move forward with it, but just so everyone's aware, we're, we're gonna be voting on that this evening, so. Any questions on that? And does anybody need any of the documentation? You should've gotten it previously, but it's been going on since July, so if you do need anything, again, just please let us know and we'll get it to you. Okay? And then, in the same vein, you've got as part of the read ahead for this meeting, so the, in a combination with their law, our plat amendments, the association is also asking for a rezone of those lots from single-family to private recreational, and so those are two separate processes and the town clerk sent out the planning timelines we have for both of those, so tonight will be the end of the plat amendment timeline, but you'll see the rezoning kinda goes on for a bit longer. And it won't come to the council for any kind of decision until January. So I just kinda wanted to, you know, keep you tracking on where that is, the planning commission, their next meeting, we'll be looking at the entire package just to make sure everything's complete and then there's 30 days' public notice and then after that, the, the planning commission will review based on any public comment received and make a recommendation to the council on whether to approve the rezone or not. So, that one's still playing out. Okay? And again, if you need any of that application information, just let us know and we'll get it out to you.
The rezoning, did they specify kinda why you wanted to rezone in the application? I don't think I see this, but, no, that's a little ways off.
Let me, I'm just gonna send those out to everybody after the meeting just to have, but let me pull it up really quickly and see.
Was the lawyer, I do remember him saying, like, joining lots is recommended, but as far as the rezoning, did he mention that? Did he evaluate?
I believe he looked at both and I, and I, there's a, I can't remember if it's a letter, part of an email, but I'll make sure you get that as well, where he felt like the town was on good ground to move forward. I mean, there have been some, for both, yes, there have been some rumblings, like, you know, with, like, we got that one negative comment and I don't know if that same party is going to have a similar objection to the rezone, 'cause we haven't gotten there yet with the planning commission, but we'll keep you posted if, if they do.
To answer your question as to why they want it rezoned?
I'm just gonna plug, yeah.
When Stewart deeded the land to the homeowners association, the deed specifies that it is to be used for recreational purposes only.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking why they want it rezoned.
Because it's been, that's why they wanna get it to what the deed says it's supposed to be used for.
Right now, it's not. It's not recreational use.
Right now, it's single-family.
Single-family.
So, I feel like, I talked to surveyor Carl Sherbal at a recent planning commission meeting, we were talking about this and his statement to me, if I remember correctly, was he felt like this was a catching up of paperwork, that it should've happened a while ago and it's just not, they haven't closed the loop on everything, so.
Thank you.
But I'll make sure everybody gets the application and then there's a statement that accompanies it, that, where they have to answer questions about, you know, the use of the property and, and we also, I guess, in our ordinances, we do have those lots grandfathered in as private recreational despite the fact that they're currently zoned single-family residential. So, it, it just seems like this is something that has been a long time coming and, and I don't know if it's past threats of litigation that have held it up or not, but again, and I'll make sure you get the town attorney's assessment of it as well, so. He said if we, if we did get embroiled in any sort of litigation, he still felt like the town was on good ground, that we're following our process and that we would be able to be extricated from anything, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. So, all right, I've got some documents to send you afterwards. All right, you bet. Moving on, next discussion item is the contingency, contingency spending and delegation of authority policy, and we have talked about this at the last couple of work sessions, I believe it may be where it needs to be now, that we did change the dollar thresholds last, at the last work session.
Yeah, we did.
And that's been updated in the document now.
This has been updated.
Right. So, with that, I believe we have a resolution in the regular meeting tonight about adopting this policy, so, again, we can look at that when we get to the regular agenda items.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for working on that, appreciate it and for the council's input on it also. All right, any questions on that one? The next item on the agenda is ordinance 202507, which is the second reading, that is the update to the commercial zone part of the ordinance. It was, in the first reading, we added in just some clarification on the conditional use process and also added the not permitted use of data centers, data centers or bitcoin mining operations. There was a discussion we had at our last work session about also changing one of the conditional uses, which is currently not permitted regarding dwelling space, and that is not in the second reading, after we talked about it last time, so that basically the second reading is the same as the first reading. Now, what I wanna bring up to the council is that the planning commission beat this up pretty good at the last meeting as well and in thinking about, or in discussing this commercial property next door and if any kind of development proposal comes forward, what we talked about was the potential that a development application could come in and also a request for rezone, to rezone it to multi-use, to potentially enable, you know, a variant, not variance, but a conditional use for dwelling space. Now, that hasn't happened, we were just speculating on how that process would work and so then the planning commission stepped through the multi-use zoning part of our regulations and interestingly, it's very short, the multi-use basically refers you back to the commercial zoning as far as uses, yes. There are no separate uses in the multi-use zoning. So that kinda brought them back around to, well, perhaps if we wanted to as a town show that we would consider dwelling in the commercial zone or in a future multi-use zone on a conditional basis, that perhaps that should be changed to conditional. Now, obviously, that's, again, does not affect anything tonight, but I'm just, that was their thought process on it, so for the third reading, we'll have to see where we end up with that, if we wanna add that back in or any other changes. I did not get any other input from them on any other changes to the commercial zone, but it was just kind of, we came right back around to the commercial zone after talking about multi-use. All right. That is all I had on that. Any other questions about that? Hasn't, again, same, no changes for tonight's reading, but we might be looking at another change for the third reading. Okay, board reports, moving on, finance advisory board.
We are waiting for the audit to be complete so that we have the draft report and then the financial advisory board will meet, review that and, and talk about investments as well.
Okay.
Those will be coming up, we just don't have a date yet, so, but as soon as I get it, Chris and I'll let you know, okay?
And I, we were gonna check with Loretta, with the treasurer, about when we're expecting the audit, we.
Yeah.
Trevor and I talked earlier and we were thinking maybe by the end of the month, but we're not sure.
That was what we were originally told, we're still on that, that date.
Yes.
Construct, but who knows?
Okay.
We'll, we'll, auditors don't care.
Well, we also talked a little bit this morning in coffee with the mayor, 'cause the audit came up and last year, if I remember right, for those of you that were on the council last year, it seemed to me like we got the audit report kind of late and then it got sent into the state before we got recommendations from the finance advisory board, so it'd be nice to have more time and there were mistakes.
Yeah, there were mistakes in the audit.
And that's, that's, we, we pushed them at the very beginning saying, we really want this because we wanna involve other people.
Right.
As the financial advisory board, I mean, one, and they said, yeah, okay, so they kinda built it around that October timeframe, getting a draft.
Okay, so we'll.
But we're at the mercy of them, because the partners have to review it.
Right.
We have to.
Okay, well, we'll kind of, at least try and reach out to them and see if they're on track.
Yep, that's what we will do.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Nope. Natural resources board.
Yeah, the natural resources board met early this month. The next natural resources board meeting will be 2 o'clock today, if anybody wants to end up coming in. The main discussion revolved around the landscaping on the entrance to the town and around the town hall. The decision was made that the south side of the entrance would be watered, the north side of the entrance would go zerescaping and they are looking into finding some rocks to get on, on the weed, non-weed penetrative surface so that it won't get destroyed over the wintertime. A question did come up that hasn't, can't answer at the moment, because evidently, when we went over and looked at the airstrip pump house, a number of valves were turned on and all of a sudden, water showed up on the north side of the road. We also had a PRV valve blow off down on Stewart's side, so we don't know what happened, but I would, would suggest that at this point, we, we kind of look into that a little, little more at some point, but leave the landscaping as zerescaping on that north, north corner.
Yeah.
The, if, if we do get water to the north side of the road, I would propose that we look at just keeping the trees alive.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All righty. All right, for the planning commission, I gave you a little bit of an update on that. We talked a lot about the ordinance that we're reading tonight and then we also had a little bit of an update on the master plan survey, which is out, just when I looked at it tonight, I'm sorry, last night, I think we had 215 responses and actually, the other thing, last week from the planning commission, Commissioner Stewart, Jenny Stewart, worked with town clerk Heard and they put together a advertisement for the Facebook page. Commissioner Stewart has a lot of experience from her previous job as a planner, where they moved from, I believe they moved from Michigan and she worked in the planning department, so she had a lot of experience with surveys and with putting ads on social media so that they are geo-fenced and don't, you know, end up getting responses from people in Alpine and Efton. So that got put up this weekend and it seems to be. So that got put up this weekend and it seems to be working. It seems like we've had a bit of an uptick in responses over the weekend, which was kind of nice.
Yeah, we've got it set up so that we, nobody can respond more than once.
They can, but when we actually get the results, because we can download them into Excel, we could filter out duplicate responses that way.
And we're finding out the duplicate from what, the IP address?
Yes, it'll be that or the directly from the email address. Cause if someone uses a link that came to them as part of the email that went out, it'll specify their email address. But otherwise, it'll, I don't know how the ones from Facebook or whatever would get in there. But so we'll see what we can do about that. Hopefully, we won't get too many double dips. Something else?
You never know.
And on the survey, also Commissioner Stewart volunteered to compile the report of the data once it's in. And we also had Val Smith, one of our residents who worked on the survey before, volunteer to help with that as well. So I think we'll be in good shape for wading through all of that information once it's available. All right, that's about it from planning commission. I don't believe the roads aboard was meeting in October, is that correct?
November.
Okay, so November, thank you. Travel and tourism, Councilman Toolson.
We met last week at two and kind of the recap, although I see Jennifer's, I don't know how much we want to go into, French the Bridger right now, but it was a successful program for the summer. Minus the guy will never return to Grover Park. And they're actually looking to do more at Star Valley Ranch instead of going back to Grover Park.
Which I thought was great.
In the future, yeah. The ranch market was awesome, they did, it seems like it's progressing. I don't know how much you want me to talk about, there might be some stuff coming along to us as far as getting more signage and maybe picnic tables for the future, but it sounds like the market did a great, it's just progressing every year. We talked about the town celebration on November eighth. And I don't know if you did, cause I saw the pins on the table, the commemorative pins. They're contemplating ordering approximately five hundred, using some of our travel tourism dollars to support the commemorative pins and maybe even looking at hats and sweatshirts to distribute during the town celebration, which are we still doing cake and ice cream or kind of after our council meeting possibly?
I know, we have to, we have to, I feel like we should do something maybe after the work session or as part of the town council meeting. You know, at this point, it's a bit, little late in the game, but if people are going to come to the town council meeting, maybe that's the best time to do it. So, or everyone on the council gets to take dessert home if nobody comes to the council meeting.
Yeah, we're just looking for more, the town, like we just need more grant opportunity or more applications.
To spend money.
There was one.
One thing on the market that was brought up was they were, they had suggested running the market even later.
Year round.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, in the winter time, maybe once a month or something at the barn.
They were talking about.
I think it was in here. I think they were going to go back to Debbie Compton and see what her thoughts were. See if we can continue, she had a bunch of vendors that said, yeah, this would be a great spot to keep it going through the winter.
That's good.
So I think that's awesome.
Awesome.
Make that work, but we haven't received anything formally back from travel and tourism.
It was just a brief conversation.
So as far as the grant, do they have to have their like event or whatever in the town or can they do it outside of it?
We, I think it's a ten mile radius, we have a number, it's in the grant that they have to be close.
Can't remember what's in the application.
Keep it here, yeah, it's in the application. I can't remember what's stuck in my head, the distances.
If they keep it here, does the grant allow them to like not have to pay for the service of the room or? I didn't see it in there, but I didn't know if that was something, do we rent out this room?
Yeah.
We do.
The room, if I remember the ordinance correctly, room is available to residents, no charge. Now, Saturday could be a bigger issue.
I don't know that we've actually collected money, even the time I've been here, to use the space, so.
So if it's for a town identity, I think you don't have to, but.
I don't think we should bill ourselves, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, for a town identity, they didn't. But I remember Kristen saying like if somebody wanted to use it, so that's why it's not going to make a difference too.
I feel like that would be weird for us to charge to have the, like, are you talking about the vendors? Like if they came in here and used the space?
No, not vendors per se, but like if people from the outside want to do a class or something.
Oh, gotcha. Like a different event and I was staying here.
We haven't billed in, I know there was a buying study group for a while, there was a.
Clothing group?
Yeah, we we didn't charge anybody. We just asked them to kind of clean up, but. It's been pretty low impact though, very few people.
Yeah, now, all of those were also happening during hours when the town was open. So this was accessible on a Saturday or a Friday would be a. A different ballgame.
So the the application, grant application says, event or project takes place in the town of Star Valley Ranch or as part of a tourism focused collaboration within Star Valley. So that seems to leave it kind of open. At one point, I remember there was like a mileage, but it must have gotten changed, yeah.
Some of the grants, like the libraries got shut down, so I don't think there are people that are looking. But this may not be like the most ideal location.
Up here, you mean, upstairs?
Not for everybody, but for some it might work great and others it might not. Cause I know some people have like their own studios and stuff that they're doing classes out of. So I just wanted to clarify that before I send them that direction.
We'll see if Debbie comes forward with a proposal of some sort, so. Anything else? Sorry, kind of, we got off track there a little bit.
Tonight with the, is she going to be here?
Yes, they are going to be here tonight, yeah.
Do we need to talk about that?
Yes, can, so everyone should have a copy of the recommendation from the travel and tourism board about using some lodging tax funds to buy more pins. I think everybody has a pin now. So do we need to, this is not on the agenda tonight or anything, but I just wanted to make sure everybody had a copy. And and Councilman Toolson did mention, the board made the recommendation. And the actual Founder's Day date is November eighth, I think, for the town, is that right?
Something like that. What we need to move on this because if we approve it, it's going to take some time for them to get to the five hundred.
It'll be at least a couple of weeks to get a new order in, so.
We ought to do something.
Can we go ahead and can I get a motion to approve the purchase of additional commemorative pins as recommended by the travel and tourism board?
Are we just doing pins then?
At this point, I don't think there's any, I mean, I certainly haven't seen any designs for hats or shorts or anything like that yet. But if we use the same design, it could potentially, we could do something, so.
So what's the total amount?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
It's like less than a thousand bucks.
Yes, they're buying five hundred, I think, I forgot to bring that. They would like a dollar seventy-five a piece.
Something like that.
So someone do math. So if they were two, two dollars, it'd be less than a thousand dollars for five hundred of them. So to spend up to one thousand dollars on the purchase of additional promotional pins, is that the appropriate motion?
Sure, I can make the motion to approve the five hundred dollar promotional pins using the lodging tax funds.
Okay, then I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Toolson to purchase additional promotional, or sorry, commemorative pins with lodging tax funds and a second from Councilman Ellis. Any other questions or discussion, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? All right, thank you very much, we will buy some more pins. Let me just jot that down.
Now, I would suggest then that we do our November meeting. We promote to get people to come to the meeting.
Yes.
The people that show up will get a pin.
Yeah.
And.
We'll be passing pins out left and right.
Or whatever.
Agreed, yes, we will try and put something out to generate some interest. It will be November, so we know we're going to lose a lot of our folks that go south for the winter. But we'll see if maybe we can generate some interest. And there are, there's some cookies over there if anybody would like a cookie. All right, where are we here? Sorry, got off track. All right, water utility board. Councilman Merrill or?
Go ahead. Here's the ladies, huh?
I think you are, you're the one who knows the most about, but you can go ahead.
There was just debate over the residential water meters again. And lots of questions in terms of the size of the tanks, et cetera. And a motion was put forward to have the town ask Lincoln County to go ahead and evaluate all of our sites in reference to security and vandalism. And the last thing they wanted was, turns out Cisco has been hacked by a foreign entity and due to its use in water systems, they wanted some checking into that to make sure that our new simply SCADA system will not be impacted. And Trevor has already checked into that and we have verification back that we're going to be safe.
So the new simply SCADA should address the concerns about cybersecurity? Is that what I'm hearing?
I did speak directly with an engineer with with the contact that I have. Did talk to the engineer and said, you'll be fine by the time this is done.
Okay.
Details will run there.
Okay. And the council, everyone should have received the recommendation from the water board. I believe they sent it to everyone on the council about the security vulnerability recommendations. So the other part of that, which is really the physical security part of like the well houses and the infrastructure, I I wanted us to talk about that and I do want to get Trevor's input. I think the recommendation from the water board was to contact the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. However, Trevor being a former police officer, I figure he may be qualified to do that too, if we feel like it's something that's necessary. So just thoughts on the need to do a physical security assessment.
I would point out that we have gone through a level two EPA review and somebody has already inspected everything. So I'm not sure when we'll get the report, but that should cover the majority of that. Am I correct?
It should recover, uh, cover some and I'll just point out that this was years ago, but last time they did an EPA assessment like that, it was two years late.
Oh, getting the report?
Yeah, the report was two years late and it's like, here's all the stuff that you're supposed to have been doing for the last two years.
Well, that's worth listening. So, physical security, what do you do? I mean, you put up a fence, people can hop a fence, how do you prevent somebody from? Where do you go with that? I mean, I get it, yes, we want to have it secure, but beyond, I mean, not.
Not anything you could do physically or IT wise that can't be defeated. Anything you do, I can't defeat. Now, there are things that will deter people, there are a lot of stuff we can talk about. But as far as the assessment goes, I think this is very misguided because I've done a ton of these, especially with active shooter and and security stuff. But the people that have the best information work here. When I did those assessments, I'd walk in, it'd be a board there or presidents or whatever, and we'd talk and introduce and I'd always go up to the person at front desk and say, ma'am, here's what I, here's what we're doing. Could you tell me what makes you feel uncomfortable? And that person always had the best evidence. The sheriff's office really doesn't offer this as a service. It's not in the purview of what law enforcement does. And they try to meet needs. I think that we, and we already have looked at things that are issues. For example, Zach had about thirty-five keys on the keychain. And I said, what is that? And he said, well, that's all the locks to our, this opens up the locks on our PRVs and everything else. And I said, yeah, we need to fix that. So we ordered new locks that have one key. So there are things like that that we're already typing up, but there's a lot and it's.
But when you tighten them up, are you saying, here's the things that we have done? Like a summary report, so if somebody were to ask, like the water board or anybody else, here's the things that we're doing?
I have not provided a report though. And I don't think we should do a report on what we're doing IT wise.
Okay.
You don't want to challenge people, you don't want to put that out there like, oh, we have security, we have this, cause.
Very true, cause then you're telling, you're illustrating what you've done.
Yes.
And the more information you put out, the more information you give me, the happier.
I'm more concerned internally so that you can keep this as an internal document that you or your staff can update and periodically review.
Yeah, we don't have it as full as that we do have, we do have things we're working on. And the majority of the stuff we're working on right now is stuff that EPA identified in the state, you need to fix this. We, I mean, we can do more things, there are fences we can put up, there are things like that we can do. And we've been fixing those as we find them. For example, I mean, when we, we had a little issue with the generator when we unlocked the big felling lock, as long as they pulled it up, we said, yeah, we need to fix that, so. As we've seen, we're fixing them, but if if the council would like a better list, we do.
I'm more concerned about you and your staff.
Okay. Yeah, we do have, we do have those we're working on.
Okay.
And they get added to all the time.
Okay, that's the key, because if the people change hands, you you see transitioning, what has somebody done before? I mean, we've learned on the water system that we have that we don't have the best of records. So it's, it's like, how do we, how do we make sure that we have that going forward? To be able to hand off to somebody if we need to. So anyway, just thoughts. And that helps everybody know, we don't have to tell them what it is, we just said we've got something internally.
When is the next water board meeting? Did they set a date?
Twenty eighth of October.
Just thinking about, to me, the physical security parts of their recommendation are the, would be the easiest, I don't say easiest to address, but just what you said, Trevor, about the locks and things on the PRV. So maybe there's something that we can put together, we being Trevor, on just a summary of, you know, we're working on these things, right? We've replaced these locks and, you know, I, I didn't, when I saw that the recommendation was to potentially, it does say Lincoln County Sheriff's Office or other qualified people.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to bring someone in to do this because you've got experience doing it and we're working on it. But I, I guess I'm thinking about it from a standpoint of, I don't want the water board to think we're just ignoring recommendations when they provide them to us. So if we do have any kind of little summary we can provide back, and that could be something that's provided to liaisons and then you can discuss it with them at the next meeting. So, I mean, it doesn't have to be a formal document, we just put some bullets in an email to give to Councilman Ellis and Councilman Merrill and they can convey it at the next meeting. Anything else from the water board?
I've got one comment on the water board. I was asked to do an analysis on depreciation versus the loan and principal payments. I finished that after I got it from the auditors and it looks like, because again, trying to get that portion that goes to the service availability fee is important to understand where we, where we land. So when I looked at the loan payments, it's an interest, it's six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars this year, okay? When I looked at the depreciation, I had to do some calculations and and carry that out fifty years for all our line items and it's well over a hundred line items. I came up with a depreciation for twenty twenty-six of five hundred and eighty-four thousand. So the depreciation amount is lower than the loan and interest. Now, the loan and interest are going to come down, depreciation, if we do some of these big tank replacements and stuff, it will, it'll go up. But basically, we're in that ballpark. So if you take the six eighty-one that the loan payments are and you say, okay, now, how many lots, how many, how many homes plus lots do we have? The lots come out to. how many, how many homes plus lots do we have, the lots come out to about 40%, 60% homes, 40% lots, so if you take that 60, or that 40% to try to understand that service availability fee, and you say, okay, so if I take 40% of the 681, total loan and interest, and calculate what that is, that's 282,000, or eight, $272,000 a year, okay, on the 40%. So then, if you compare it to our budget on just the service availability fee, the budget was 282, we're within $10,000, and the budget's actually high by 10K, but it's, it's really close, I was really surprised how close it was on that service availability fee, because you assume that the 60% that are using the base fee, that $28.50 is also built into that, and it came out to really, really, I was surprised how close, actually. So, again, I think it, it tells us that every year, we just do this analysis to see how it, how it fits, because lots are gonna drop, especially with all the building, that, you know, base fees will go up, so I think we're in good shape, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that was done, and I forward that to Steve, and we'll see, see if we get any feedback.
I think the other thing, so that kind of goes along with some of the discussion at the Water Board meeting about reserves, I know that came up again.
Yeah.
And I know there's concern at the Water Board with depletion of reserves, how do we build up reserves, so I kind of expect to see some recommendations.
I would like them to talk more about grants.
Yes.
Because grants is the answer, until we're told it's not, right? And, and that's where we've really got to focus our attention, because again, a $3 million million gallon tank, I think it's a great idea, but I need to know more about it, but again, is there money, I don't want to spend $3 million if, if there's grant money that a lawyer can go after, so, anyway.
Councilman Bitter, will you send that information to Mr. Crandall, would you please copy the council?
Okay.
So everybody's got the same.
I will send it right now.
Data points, please, thank you.
Okay.
All right, anything else for the Water Board? All righty, okay, let's take a quick look, moving on to Agenda Item Five, the regular agenda for this evening, there we go. So usual things at the beginning, we have call to order, the pledge, reconvening the meeting, adopting the agenda, now, then we go into announcements and proclamations, and we do have two things there, we will have Ms. Rick Coopero, I probably said that wrong, Jennifer from Friends of the Bridger Teton will be there this evening, and she'll provide a report to the council, and anybody who attends the meeting on how their lodging tax grant went, and then we were also going to do a presentation of the Right for the Brand Award, we've been talking about that and how to, we've been putting them in the newsletter, but it seemed like maybe it'd be more appropriate to recognize individuals at a council meeting who get the award, so we're planning to do that this evening, and then there'll be a public comment, we've got the consent agenda for ordinances, we just have the second reading of the land usage for the commercial zone updates, and then under resolutions and motions, we've got the contingency spending resolution, or policy resolution, could I, Councilman Bitter, can I ask you to read that when we get to it, to the, reading the resolution to adopt that contingency spending policy?
Yes.
Contingency spending policy, thanks.
Yep.
And then, actually, can I get a volunteer to read the ordinance? Councilwoman Ellis.
On tools.
All right.
Do you want a motion to read the ordinances by title and explanation?
I think you can do, well, it, it's just the one.
Yeah.
So maybe it's not really necessary.
And since there's no different changes, there's no changes in that.
Changes from first to second, yeah.
I'll just deal with it that way.
Yeah. Okay, then we have a few things under the public hearing and action items, so the first one is we have the recommendation on the plat amendment for the association to combine those lots in plat 17, so the, in the packet, the memo from the Planning Commission will be in there, and after we read that, I may go ahead and read it, unless I point at somebody else to do it, but I'll just go ahead and do it, I'm gonna ask for a motion, well, after we have any comments or discussion about it with the audience and with the council.
You're gonna have your chair, your Planning Commission, here tonight?
Well, that's me, so.
Oh, okay. How, how about a member of the Planning Commission?
I don't know if anyone's gonna be here, I didn't ask anyone to come, so, that's why I was thinking maybe I would just read, I probably should have planned that a little bit better, because I know in the past, someone from the PNC would read it.
From the commission.
I can ask, Fred would be here or not, so we'll handle that, but I'll need to ask for a motion to either approve or deny that application, so we'll have a vote there. And then we have three liquor license renewals, and for these, I'm gonna have to ask Councilman Toolson to recuse herself from the discussion and the voting on these three.
Do you want to stay here and be quiet?
So I've been looking at that, you know, Robert's Rules talks about, you know, if you have to recuse yourself from a vote, you should remove yourself from the platform, we don't really have a platform up here, or a dais, or, it even says you should be outside of the room, I, I'm comfortable with you just sitting back and not participating, if any of the council feels like we should ask Councilman Toolson to go sit in the front row while we do that, we can do that, I just don't know that we're.
I mean, if I wasn't on the council, I'd be in the audience.
Right, right, so, I don't know, if we had more of a formal, like, you know, town council dais that we all sit behind, then maybe I would ask you to step down, but it seems silly to me, potentially, to have you have to get up and go sit in the front row, or back row, whatever. So anyway, you'll have to, so I'll, I'll just point out that you're gonna recuse yourself from the next discussion, the, you know, next three agenda, action, agenda items, and.
Well, she could, could she respond to a question that may be raised, if there was a question?
Um, I don't think so, no, she has to, no discussion, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Like even as a citizen?
That's what I was wondering.
Like if somebody asks me something?
I know.
Yeah.
I guess we as board members could respond.
Yes, council couldn't, we wouldn't respond to anything, so, and the way we'll go do these liquor licenses, I'm gonna ask the town clerk to read those, and then after they're read, and then if there's any public comment or discussion, then after that, I'll ask for a motion to approve or to deny, okay, and so we'll have to do each one that way.
Okay.
And then we've got the mayor and council time, and then that's it, so, few extra things tonight, and other than that, I guess nothing too out of the ordinary, so the liquor licenses come up annually, so this will be the first time this council has to do those.
They're not increasing your price, are they? Cost? It's the same cost?
No, it was the same price.
Okay. We've seen price escalation lately, so, I was just curious.
All right, so that's, any questions about tonight's agenda?
I thought, is Silver Star planning to debrief, is it in November, or was it this month?
November, yeah. Okay, moving on, matters from the mayor and council, Councilman Merrill, anything? Nothing? Okay, Councilman Toolson, anything? Councilwoman Ellis?
Nothing.
All right, I have a one, let's see, do you want to have anything? Oh, yes, I have two quick things. I forwarded to the council a resolution that the mayor from Fane forwarded with a recommendation from their council to the Lincoln County Commissioners, that they should provide their meetings on video, and I didn't know if we, as a council, felt compelled enough to also offer a similar type resolution in the next couple of months, I, it is kind of odd that you can't watch their meetings live, most, I think, all the other towns in the valley might be doing that now, and there's no, that I'm aware of, not any recording where you can go watch their meetings after the fact, so I thought it was actually a pretty interesting proposal, a lot of people have, aren't, just look at today, they're not here because they're working or whatever, so having it available for people that want to look at it later, so I just asked you to think about that, I might bring it up again to see how you feel with the next work session, and if we feel like it's something that would be meaningful to the residents of Star Valley as a whole, then maybe we would lend some support to that.
Just an interesting twist on, of that, and it's probably due to advances in technology, but under Robert's Rules of Order, your minutes of your meeting are your official record of the meeting, now, can that be superseded by posting the video? That has not been addressed yet by whoever does Robert's Rules of Order, so.
That's a good point, so, we'll be interested to see, I, I would imagine, since they received the resolution from Fane, that it would be on an agenda item, or that the Commissioners would talk about it at some point, just, or respond in some way, so. The only other thing I have that I wanted to bring up is just a reminder that on Thursday at 1:00, we're gonna be doing the master plan work session and leadership meeting to prioritize objectives for the master plan update, so it'll be up here, we're gonna rearrange the room, we're probably all gonna be kind of facing that way, but we'll, we want to make sure we get it so we can record it, but also have it, you know, in a format that Frank Bell can work with, as far as, he's old school and he wants to be able to write on flip charts and hang them on the wall and stuff, so, we need some wall space.
Yeah.
And we'll have some snacks and things, so, and we're desperately gonna try and keep that meeting to two hours.
Okay.
Or less if possible, yes.
Good luck.
All right, and that's all I have, so could I get a motion to recess this meeting until 7:00 PM this evening?
I motion that we recess this meeting until 7:00 PM this evening.
Thank you, I have a motion from Councilman Bitter, is there a second?
Also.
Second from Councilman Ellis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, we are recessed at 11:21 AM.